Oh, the December fourteenth meeting to order, uh, I don't even know what time it is. Uh, seven oh three. Um, I would like to follow with a moment of silence for the membrance of the ten year anniversary of the Newtown tragedy. Um, so we will do that following the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, for the nation. And justice.
Thank you. Okay, um, I believe we can move right to the approval of minutes on D. For the November thirtieth meeting.
Tony Holt, I move to approve the minutes from November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two.
Sophia Shake second.
Um, does any board member have any concerns about those minutes? If you could, please raise your hand. And if not, we will do a roll call vote, seeing that we are all virtual. Uh, seeing no hands, um, let's go to Jaden.
Hi.
Jacob?
Good abstain.
Okay, Tony.
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Okay, I'm a I as well, therefore it's majority. This is, okay. Uh, let's move on to public participation. Obviously, we are remote tonight. Um, if anybody in the audience would like to speak, please raise your hand. You'll be given two minutes. If you could, please list your name and address for the records. And my little box just left. Uh, okay.
Sorry, I have to.
No problem.
Put up the timer.
The reason I can't get it, my view is like not usually I can have like three things and it's not doing it. So I don't know. Why that is, but I'll figure it out. Okay, seeing, um, no hands. Uh, let's move on to the correspondence for Jacob.
Right? Just a note before this, uh, correspondence report covers the November meetings along with this meeting. So we had an email asking the district to pursue trackers on school buses during the bidding process. The author emphasized the difficulty of being a working parent when the buses are erratic. We had an email asking for an earlier twenty twenty-three start date. The author was concerned about finding childcare in the, in the late summer days. And we also had an email expressing disappointment that the board goals were not approved unanimously. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Jacob. Um, at this point, points of information, if any board members have anything they'd like to say, please just raise your hand. And I will call on you. And if not, we will move on to the, um, okay, go ahead, Tony.
Yep, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to take a moment and thank, uh, Dr. Willitt and the administration and the, the staff of TIS for what I felt was incredible industrial, or sorry, instructional rounds, uh, last Friday. Particularly enjoyed when they brought the students in to talk about their experiences and all the now learned an awful lot and I appreciate them giving up their time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members at this time? Okay, we can move to our student representative reports. If you guys just wanna unmute yourselves, go, go right ahead and proceed.
Okay, so first, um, we were informed that we were, uh, approved for a winter rally, which is pretty exciting. Um, we've never seen one at Tallon High School, so that should, we should be looking forward to that. I think we're gonna have a meeting next Tuesday. Usually we have meetings on Mondays, but we have a data, data team meeting on Monday, so we're gonna talk on Tuesday about it. And it should be pretty exciting. We're all looking forward to it.
The NHS is holding a big fundraiser event for charity. And basically what students get to do is they get to donate money to a specific teacher. Um, not to the teacher, but for the teacher. And then the teacher that gets the most money gets pied, probably on the morning announcements. So I think that the teachers are Mr. Wees, Mr. Lee Pack, Ms. Lyon Bizney, Ms. Bridge and Ms. Marinin. So that's super exciting.
Uh, yeah, there's, there's a lot of student participation in that. And I've heard like everyone talk about it, like who they want to tie, which is pretty exciting. Uh, next, um, a new club that is like starting to rise, which I'm a part of is Model UN. We have been advertising on the morning announcements to try to get more participants because the club is very sparse. But with more participants, we're hoping to like join conferences, like maybe one in Hartford, and we're hoping that our numbers boost so that we're able to do that.
Mm-hmm. Not technically in the school, but school affiliated. The mock trial is having their big competition on Friday. I am in it. It's gonna be super exciting and, um, we get an excuse day from school. So thank you, Mr. Poland. That was great of you. Um, and yeah, we're gonna have a lot of fun.
Um, tomorrow, I'm wearing my DECA sweatshirt. We have, uh, DECA practice competition, which is pretty exciting. Audrey and I are very excited to participate. Um, so that's gonna be hosted tomorrow night and we should see big things out of it.
And finally, our dance team is looking for new members. Anyone can join. They perform at basketball games and some other school events. Those will be really fun. I can't dance, but if I could, I'd join too. So that's about it. And after any comments or questions, both Mara and I do have to leave for homework sake.
At this time, if any board members have any questions for them, um, please feel free. I am very excited about the mock trial for Friday. I think it's gonna be great. Um, you guys have definitely worked very hard. And so, like I said, it's gonna be very awesome to be in a courtroom to actually see that happen. So. Definitely. Um, any questions for me? No? Okay. Well, thank you, ladies. So if you want to take off and do your homework, please feel free. Thank you. Okay, um, Dr. Will, if you want to go with I one, that'd be great.
Yes, um. Okay, so, um, the school calendar is the first item for tonight. Uh, adjustments, and let me see if I can scroll down to this so everybody can see it. Forgive me for kinda scooting over. Um, so the major change there is the, um, the adjustment was made as per the discussion in the meeting from the original um, to the adjusted to have the, uh, dates of the school year start earlier. So now the training dates for teachers are the twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth and thirtieth, with the first day of school being on the thirty-first, um, which looked like from um, the notes in the minutes, uh, you know, where, where the board was feeling would be most appropriate. So, um, that adjustment was made. Um, and so this revised one, which is the second one, you know, the first one is the original. This is the second uh, in the agenda and attachments is the, uh, the one that I think the board had indicated that it preferred.
Yeah, I would, um, open this up to any board members. I, I'm, I kinda called the draft B when I was going through the package, to be honest, um, so, cuz I was like, wait a minute, A is the same thing that we discussed. And then I saw the B, so. Um, absolutely. Let's have another discussion. Jacob?
Yeah, well, it looks like it was a productive discussion, um, at the last meeting, which I couldn't attend, but um, I think that, starting on August thirty-first is, is a good idea. I agree with the parent that sent in an email earlier expressed concern about, um, the later start. Um, I did have a question, Dr. Willitt, about, uh, two days in the calendar. I was just a little bit confused about what they were. I think it was January twenty-sixth and, um, there is a second one. I'll go January twenty-sixth. Is that a day off?
January, uh, yeah, the high school midsemester day is the day between the two semesters where they switch up everything. So the, there, that is a day that the high schoolers don't attend while the, um, school shifts over to the next semester and all the teachers prep for the next semester. Um, so that's a, uh, that is a, um, high school thing. The rest of the school has the in-service. K eight has it in-service that day. The high schoolers have that time, yeah.
And then February wouldn't be a midsemester day, but is that also like a half of February break, the twenty-first?
That one is a in-service. So that's, um, that is off for students that, that all staff are working, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, um, those, those are my questions, so, good.
Hey, Tony?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Will, for putting this together. I think it articulates well. Uh, the, the concerns and thoughts that at least a few of us were having in the last meeting. I, I personally, while I know it's only a few days moving, I think it makes a rather large difference overall within the year. So I, I like option or draft B, I think is actually called it. Thank you.
I mean, if there's no other further discussion, I mean, we can, I'll entertain a motion to move this to the board action. I just wasn't sure cuz I know a couple of people were out and so I just wanted to make sure everyone had a uh, conversation with it. Um, I am, I, I do like that draft. Like I said, I call it draft B just because it's like A and B. Um, so I will entertain a motion to vote on the calendar as L three, if anyone wants to make that motion.
Yeah.
Uh, Jake and Mari, I move to move item L one to, or I one to, uh, L three, voting on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school calendar.
Sophia Shake second.
Okay, um, if there's any discussion, please raise your hand if you're concerned about moving this to L three. Um, otherwise, I will go down our boxes and do a roll call vote. And we'll start with Jaden.
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Floor?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
I'm a I as well, therefore we will move this down to a board action for L three to have a vote on the calendar. Okay. Let's, uh, move to the monthly financial.
Okay. Okay, so, um, this is, uh, the monthly financial report for November. It is the, um, first one coming from our new, uh, our new business manager. However, we, you know, we're gonna be looking at, um, kind of making some of this more concise. Um, right now, as you can see that we're in the November period, this closes it out. Um, the budget balance is five hundred thirty-two thousand six hundred and twelve, um, six hundred and twelve. Uh, it's about one point two eight percent of the, uh, of the budget overall. Um, you know, we, being in November, there's still quite a bit that is left to be expended. Uh, so if you could, you know, take a look at the, the the monthly report that, um, you know, we share in the next page, it gives you kind of where all the budgets are at this point in time. Um, I did do quite a bit of, uh, work recently with, uh, Egypt, so I didn't get to put the summary together that I usually would do. But this gives you a good idea of where everything is. So if we have questions, I can just take them back, um, record them and, and provide some answers, you know, at the following meeting or on the dashboard.
Okay, with that said, if any board members have any questions, please raise your hand at this time and we can review. None? Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Will, for putting that together. Um, let's move on to is it, uh, the profile and performance report.
Okay, so the next item is, um, profile and performance report each year. Uh, I'm to put this in front of the board of ed, uh, so you can see what we submit to the state. Profile and performance report, if you remember from last year, has a fixed number of characters that you can use. Um, so, um, you know, one of the things that I did recently for the board is I put together our annual report, um, and that was posted out and I'll be posting that publicly as soon as I get a free minute here. There's a lot of things I have to update on our website. And so that's one of them, but I did manage to get it onto the dashboard. Um, and so the annual report is really, uh, like a full report that goes on for many, many pages, uh, as many of you have looked at it, uh, noted. The profile of performance report is smashing as much of it into, um, into these fixed character areas as we possibly can. So, um, between now and next year, there is a lot that we can update. Um, but it's always kind of updating for, uh, you know, it's a little bit of a lag cuz it has, it's really for last year. So, um, so there's a lot of things I'll be adding to it, uh, this year as we create the new profile and performance report when I submit that again. Um, but this is the one that is currently, um, you know, been submitted. And so I won't read it verbatim. It is available, uh, and I think it's in the, it is in the, uh, agenda packet. And so it's three sections, school district improvement plans, parental outreach, um, efforts to reduce racial, ethnic and economic isolation and equitable allocation of resources among district schools. So these are the mandatory fields that you have to fill in. And as I said, there's a fixed character set. So, um, this is what we had submitted. Um, there's a number of changes that are coming. Uh, there are things that stayed pretty consistent over the last few COVID years. So it's not, um, it's not really that different from year to year. Um, you may note that if you look at last year's, um, but I do expect the coming year to have quite a few of the additional programming elements that we have, you know, included in this. So just have to figure out how to get it in that character set. So right now, this is, um, what has been submitted. And I'm just putting in front of the board to make sure that you've seen that, um, and, uh, to fulfill the requirements.
Any questions from board members at this time? Please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. Oh, Jacob?
Yeah, um, this might be a conversation you'd take offline at one point, Dr. Will, but I, thanks for providing the report to us, but I, I mean, just to be frank with you, and when I read this like first go around, um, it just seems like there's a ton of buzzwords. You know, it seems like we're checking a lot of buses, but trying to check a lot of boxes here, but like I didn't, I don't know, to some, to some extent, I just felt like there was, um, I didn't really learn a whole lot about the district. It just felt like we were checking boxes for the Department of Education. I know there's a character limit, but, um, I, I would like to, to dive deep up into some of those subjects with you. Um.
Of course.
Yeah.
This, this is developed by the staff, right? So the administrator is pretty good, but the character limit, it actually does kind of make it an exercise where whereas if you look at the annual report, it's an extrapolation of all these things that we do. Um, when you're looking at the PPR, you have to smash that into character limits. So it does become sort of a recitation as best you can of, uh, as much that you do as you can possibly say in thirty-one hundred characters, for instance, you know, so. So it is kind of an exercise of that kind. Um, but the staff, uh, you know, do collectively have input on it. Our adminis- administrative staff review it and and actually piece it together. And then I have to smash it into that character limit. So for an extrapolation, you know, if the public wants to see like the Cribs version, you'd see PPR. If you wanna see the extrapolated, you know, long version, that forty plus or whatever pages of the annual report has all, you know, all the detail.
All right, I'll try to take a look at that. Um.
And that's on the dashboard.
Can I ask this? Like, what does the state actually do with this? I'm just kinda curious with the.
Uh, they have these overall pages that they, they will throw this narrative into this overall page. So every district has one. Um, and this is one section of their overall PPRs on all the district profile and performance reports. And they throw these narratives in, um, nested in with all the other stuff, like how many kids you have, how many teachers you have, how many grades you have, how many buildings you have, um, that type of thing.
Those more informational for the C S D E kind of, okay.
Yeah, this is a C S D E requirement and, um, yeah, so that's, that is why, uh, we do it this way. Um, as opposed to say the annual report, which gives you more detail. This is, uh, this is required that we use these headings and put, you know, and use those character limits, um, et cetera.
Okay. No, thank you for some background information. That's helpful.
Sure.
Hey, anyone else at this time? Okay, let's move on to the transportation update.
Okay, um, so let me just pull up a couple of notes here. Um, so very good news on that. Um, we've made some real progress. Uh, we had a pre-bid, pre-bid conference. And I've been, uh, as we moved along, uh, you know, really this has been the stage where that went out there and, and we're waiting for uh, people to, um, put in bids. And so the pre-bid conference, we had three, uh, three companies show up and we're asking questions and that's a good sign. Um, and so we, you know, about an hour and a half that day, we answered some questions and, uh, the actual deadline for the bid is tomorrow. So, uh, tomorrow, uh, will be, um, at around about ten o'clock. I have to check my calendar, but it's about ten. Um, you know, these have to be in and we will open them and they are opened in front of, uh, of any and all of the bidders as it is a public process. Um, we, they are entitled to see each other's. So I'm gonna make copies and put them out so that they can, you know, evaluate each others. Uh, and that starts the process of us deliberating, uh, as to, you know, which company Tallon may wanna go with. So at this point, what will happen is, uh, I'll gather those. Um, we'll do the process where they all get to see each others and then ultimately, um, I will be sitting down with, uh, with Jen, Gao Chan and Tony Holt as part of the committee, as well as, um, some of our staff. And we will, uh, walk through those bids together. So, um, it's an exciting time. You know, we've reached this point and, um, it was, it was good to have three. We'll know how many we, we actually have tomorrow. There's a possible fourth, I think that's interested too. So, um, you know, tomorrow will be, will be a big day for us, seeing who, uh, actually comes and, and actually provides a bid. But I'm optimistic and, um, you know, we've done a lot of work to get here. So it's a, it's a good time, an exciting time for us.
Okay, any board member questions? Hey, Jaden?
Thank you, um, Dr. Will. The company that could be interested in, obviously they weren't there for the sort of the line of, the line of questioning. Um, if they are gonna be one of the bidders, um, you know, uh, how do we sort of take that? You know, take their bid for what it is versus take their bid for what it is, as well as make sure that they're aware of the obstacles that they could run into. Um, will there, with a, with a, you know, line of questioning be shared with them? Or is it just the bids themselves that is gonna be sort of communicated between?
Well, our, um, uh, thank you for the question. Our bid specs are out there. So everything that, you know, uh, the, the number of buses, uh, the, the special ed, the routes, everything. So they know what they're getting into. And, um, they have everything that they need to, to, you know, provide us a, a bid that, um, you know, encompasses, uh, you know, encompasses what Tallon's gonna be looking for here. Um, and that was gathered along the path and along the way from the, you know, from the, the parent viewer and, uh, you know, the buses to make sure our routes are getting done on time and, you know, all of those things. So, uh, none of them should come to the table tomorrow, not knowing exactly what, um, the bid specs were. The, so uh, even the one who didn't show up, uh, and again, I say one, um, I just expected for three came and it could be that that one just could make it or somebody got sick or whatever, but they had all the information. So, um, there's nothing saying they won't come to, uh, the actual, um, bid opening tomorrow. Um, so we'll see what happens. I'm optimistic though. They have all the info they need to be able to put their proposals together.
Okay, let's go to Tony.
Yeah, Dr. Will, uh, you said tomorrow is the official bid opening and if I heard you correctly, uh, they'll, they'll have access to be able to review each other's bids. Uh, will Jen and I be able to get a copy of those bids to review before the discussions?
Oh, yeah, when, when we call the committee meeting together, I'm gonna put it up so that everybody can see it, kind of like an agenda with attachments.
But I guess, yeah, that was my question. If, if the bids are open as of tomorrow, can we get copies before the meeting, uh, that you're putting together to be able to review and part of the thoughts together?
Yeah, yeah, what I'm, what I'm saying is I'll, I'll set it up and I'll put the agenda out ahead of the meeting with, with attachments, with those, with that information available.
Thank you.
Hey, Jacob?
Exactly. So for the bid specs, I'm familiar with the process. Does that go down to like a granular level where we would talk about things like wanting the trackers on the bus? Um, I'd like specific.
Yeah, it, it illustrates the number of buses, the parent view, the, um, the, actually, uh, even information provided went beyond that to even routes. Uh, it also has requirements of them, so we don't get a lot of extra stuff, you know, from paperwork point of view.
So get a pretty detailed look from whoever submits these bids. Okay. And then, um, I don't know what I was gonna say. I'll yield the floor.
Okay, um, it'll be interesting to see what happens tomorrow. Um, that is very exciting that we had, uh, three people, at least so three companies that are interested in maybe possibly a fourth. So it'll be good to compare apples to apples and see where we're at. So keep us posted on how that goes.
Will do.
Um, let's move on to the, um, unstructured time.
Okay, so I did wanna share this resource. Um, it was something the curriculum committee had been talking about. Um, Mr. Mari shared some resources here that I know that he, uh, found to be valuable with respect to unstructured time. Um, and actually, I'm gonna yield the floor to him to kind of introduce the resources and talk about them a little bit. And certainly I can, I can talk to it too. Um, but I know it was something that, uh, Mr. Mari felt would be good for the agenda. So I just wanted to kind of toss the ball to him right now and then I can follow up, you know, after.
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Will. Uh, so to purpose this, uh, topic, we did discuss this, uh, in curriculum committee, um, a couple of months ago. And it was something I wanted to bring to the board so you could have a wider discussion about it as well. And I know it's an issue that several parents have brought up and it's something I'm passionate about as well. Um, so, so basically the whole idea about it, about this concept is that kids, especially young kids, really benefit from unstructured playtime within their day. Um, it's, it's good if you read the articles, you can see all how it's very beneficial for, um, their cognitive development. It's good for their problem solving development and it's good also for their social skill development as they learn to work out problems among themselves and, uh, learn how to do those things without constant, um, rules and adult, um, you know, having adults intervene and decide, uh, how disputes should be handled. Um, so there's, there's many components of this. Um, there's a lot of unstructured play, obviously would happen outside of school, but I think, um, we can agree that over the past few years, you know, the rise of, um, technology becoming very accessible for young, young kids, especially, um, along with, uh, I would say, um, a curriculum that in many ways can be quite rigid and, and kind of brings the, the, the models that you're seeing in older grades down to younger grades. Which does have some benefits, but it, it also has some serious cons, one of those being that, um, elementary education is not, uh, as it used to be. And I think kids have fewer of these opportunities for this, for the unstructured play. So I guess that the conversation from the, from the board's standpoint, um, would be how can we work more of this into the day? And how can we encourage it outside of the classroom? How can we help? Um, parents who, who want their kids to be, um, active outside of school and not always be looking at, um, at their technology? How can we help, help facilitate that as a district? I think it's something that a lot of parents are looking for, um, in, in this day and age, especially post-COVID, uh, where there is so much isolation with their kids. So that's, that's, uh, that's what I have to open up the conversation, Dr. Will. I don't know if you have anything to add or we can, we can start the conversation off, but I wanna bring it to the board's attention and probably bring some of this back to curriculum committee, um, as well. Let's get some board feedback.
Yeah, sure. Um, so, and I think there are many models that, um, that you, we can see just in the world. Obviously, there are certain countries that have a real focus on a cooperative play and cooperation versus competitive, uh, play, you know, things like that. They also, um, there are many countries that do provide a lot of unstructured time and, um, and there are other places in the United States to do that. A lot of times, um, in the United States, you know, we have a little bit more of a fixed school day. Kids don't go home for lunch and come back. There's a whole lot of things in there. So, um, when we do engage in the discussion, um, you know, there are some things I can put together for a, uh, more detailed and depth discussion. I know Mr. Mari was thinking we'd talk a little bit about it today and then explore it more as we go along. Um, there's, uh, I can put together a report for the board on, uh, you know, on our practices in the Tallon Public Schools. There's, I can put together a report for the board on, you know, on our practices in the Talon Public Schools. I know that our, our teachers do provide a lot of time for kids to, to get up and stretch and do things. You know, we adhere to the state requirements for minutes and so on. And that is working in, you know, recess, also working in, you know, reasonable lunch period, also working in little periods of time where they do have stretch breaks and play some games and do things like that to kind of, you know, to have a exploration sort of get them reset. And teachers, especially in the K five zone, know that having that reset time is really important. So they do have tools that they use that are pedagogical tools to, to give the kids the reset time. So we have a lot going on right now in the Talon Public Schools that, that, that does and is responsive to giving that to kids. One thing that we do push against that we didn't have, say, when I was a kid is they know a lot more today, research wise about reading, for instance. So there's a whole lot more in dyslexia and a lot of other things. So because there's a lot more knowledge about these, how to, you know, help develop strong readers in the earliest ages, how to build those skills to give them success through their whole, you know, high school or through the whole school career. How to address dyslexic, you know, needs and so on. Because all of those things now are better known, a lot of time does go into making sure that the kids are prepared and that those things are addressed. Cause in the past they could go, you know, maybe when I was a kid, they could go unrecognized and unaddressed and they affected people all the way through their, their school career and beyond. So the state puts a lot of requirements on us as a school system. We don't have a ton of flexibility in how long our school day is without there being financial impacts. And so we do work everything we can into the time that we have. But state requirements, you know, making sure we're fulfilling, you know, the reading requirements the, in the program requirements, you know, those all take the time that, you know, it allows us to then have, you know, decent accountability scores and, you know, decent metrics of accountability for us back and things like that. So it's an IABs, you know. So it's, it's really finding the right balance. And I think where's, there's always, you know, there's always ground to cover. There's always things we can do to make things better. But I do think we do a pretty good job right now too. So it'll be good to talk about that more as we go along. I can do a full report on, you know, where we're at.
All right. We'll go through board members, but um, I do know the school, especially K through five, what is that program that they use that they can put on to the smart board and it gets the kids up and moving? I can't, for the life of me, I can't remember what it is. Go noodle? Is it go noodle?
Go noodle, go noodle.
It's quite, it's a fan favorite. I have the go part and I'm like, it's not go Kami. Kami was the other program for the, the worksheets. I'm like, what was that? I can't remember. So thank you, Data. Go, go noodle. That's what it is. Go ahead, Tony.
Yeah. And thank you, Jacob, for providing these resources. I read through them and the, the one thread that, that kept going through my head again, and Dr. Willitt really touched on it a lot there is, you know, the, the unstructured play and the things that we're learning and the, the importance of it tracks right along with a lot of the additional knowledge that we're learning of in, in other areas. For example, just last Friday, I think in the instructional rounds, Dr. Willie, correct me if I, if I'm off, but you know, we talked about some of the additional math time that was built into the day to, to accommodate the bridges and the board work and those kinds of things. And the administration and teachers talked about how they kind of had to play this, this balancing act. You know, it's, it's 20 minutes. It doesn't just come from, from nowhere. It has to come from here and come from there. So my worry is the big picture is we look at us a limited number of minutes that are available in the day. And we see all these different things that we need to do because they're critical for the student to develop in these ways. How are we watching that, that, that overall puzzle? You know, how do we identify 10 more minutes of unstructured play would be more beneficial than five more minutes of math or 20 more minutes of social studies? You know, it, it seems like an incredibly large and very complex puzzle.
Yeah. Well, it's interesting. You should mention social studies. One of my pet peeves, and I will make this short. Is that with the, the folk I that there has been on that spec, which had a focus on math, your reading. And then, and in GS, that's science and so on. Social studies really took a backseat in many, just even really all the schools in our country. So you know, there's, there's a lot of things that buy for the time. And then so we're trying to get social studies back in, in play here. So a very important thing for, you know, for our community and the United States. Having said that, yep, that's the, that is the question is really just making sure we have the right balance. So a good conversation to have.
Can I, can I just answer that question real quick, Tony, as well? You know, you're, you're, you're absolutely right. Like there is that balance and there are, we can't make more minutes in the day. And I think a big part of this conversation might be more, not necessarily adding more of it in, but like, how do we use that time better? And also, as I mentioned, trying to give parents the resources to enable them to encourage that among their own kids. It is an important part of that conversation, but you're, but you're absolutely right. You know, we've got things that need to be taught during the day. And as you know, we, we have an increasing number of things we're required to teach because, because of new state laws and mandates. So it's something we do have to be mindful of.
Yeah. If I may, I just want to drop a compliment. I do think our teacher, I'm sorry, I, I'll do that in a minute. I noticed that there's another hand up, but I can't see who it was.
It's Dana.
Dana. Okay. Sorry.
No, go, please go ahead, Dr. Watch.
No, I just wanted to compliment our teacher, you know, I, I've sweeping around through the schools. You know, they, they do, I, I could not do the job of an elementary school teacher. They, they are amazing human beings. All, I think all, you know, there's many, many amazing human beings and among them are the elementary school teachers. They really know how to pivot, you know, and they do these things like the noodle stuff and you know, they are able to really, they see and read the kids and they see where they're at and time for a stretch break, time for this, time for that. Time to, you know, dance. They really do pivot into these things and do some great activities there. They are amazing professionals. And so I think that's one of the things in instructional rounds, it's such a great thing to do with the board because you know, as we come up on some of the other things, you get to see that in action. And, uh, you know, we, there really is some masterful stuff going on. So I just want to compliment them. All our teachers, but K five teachers, you know, you know, the little, the little kids, they need those breaks. They need to be able to stretch and they just do this really amazing job of helping, you know, helping get them what they need as they go through the day.
Okay, um, let's move to Dana.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I appreciate this being put on the agenda. I think it's a fantastic topic. We reviewed a lot of it when the design and concepts of different aspects of Birch Grove and the building committee was discussing different rooms and such, you know, movement rooms, movement chairs. The reason for wanting the swings to be added, because I know that those were, we thought we were going to move the old swings and then wasn't, we weren't necessarily sure if we were going to put new swings into the Birch Grove Building Committee. Into the Birch Grove complex, but I mean, Dr. Willett supported why that movement and those, that swinging and having that extra, you know, it helps kids focus. You know, play supports literacy and its development. So having those other avenues of increasing their education is paramount. Like you said, Dr. Will, the, the educators do such a great job pivoting. I mean, I remember going into a second grade classroom and Ms. Semerow had some beautiful orchestra music while those kids were, you know, where they were writing. And then another time they were doing a more, a more active situation scenario in the classroom where she had them moving. Because I mean, they do have, they have to get the wiggles out. They have to get the go noodle. You have to get that. But you know, it, it does say that activity and play supports literacy, activity and play and movement supports building and development of their joints and their muscles and their hand functions and and those kinds of things. That's even why they talk about it in the pre-K. You know, letting the kids use the pencils and the crayons so that they can use that development. So I, I look forward to continuing this conversation. You know, I think it's a great, thank you, Jacob, for what you presented in those attachments. They were, they're quite eye opening and it's exciting to see that we're talking about this. But I, you know, I do wish that I get to get, got to go to that TAS structural rounds. But I spent a lot of time at TAS that week and unfortunately I wasn't able to make it that day, but I do thank the team. I, you know, I spoke with Jen briefly after and I'm glad Tony had a great time. And, uh, in an experience that so Jen had a lot of wonderful things to say about the children and staff. So thanks again. And that's all I have.
Yeah, let's go to, uh, Ford.
I just wanted to say, oh, I noticed the difference in my own child. So he started kindergarten during, you know, during COVID with the masks and the kids weren't allowed to share. And he came home and, and he didn't, not that he didn't like his teacher. She was great, but he didn't, he didn't have the opportunity to really get close to his new friends. And then when things got a little bit more laid back and the teachers had the autonomy to, I think, allow this unstructured time when they needed it. You know, I noticed a huge difference over the past couple of years versus when, you know, they had to sit at their desks three feet apart with their masks and don't touch each other's wrecking wrecks or whatever they were called. So I guess my question, I guess this is kind of philosophical and a great conversation for to continue in the curriculum committee is if, if you mandate unstructured time, to me, I feel like it then becomes structured. You're like, okay, you're going to have it between, you know, 12 and 12:30 whereas now it's, it seems like, you know, and I can only speak from, you know, Lee's teachers. You know, when they need it, they, they get it and they also get their, their education at the same time. So I don't know if I really have a point there. I just, I noticed the difference that I think the teachers really, I mean, at this point have the autonomy to do what they need to do. But definitely I love the topic and conversation. I think it's unstructured play in a sense is, you know, how we all get through life, you know, learning to socialize and talk to people and sort out differences. But thank you. Thank you for the agenda item.
Thank you, everybody for your feedback. And guys said, well, we'll, we'll take this back to the committee and hopefully try to work out some, some concrete answers to everybody, but it was really nice hearing what everybody had to say. I'm sure this won't be the last you hear about it.
Yeah. And Mr. Mari did make an effort to make sure we were talking about it in curriculum. I just pulled up a thing to share from the September meeting too. So there's, so your references noodle and the daily stretching breaks and the requirements and all of that. So I thought I would throw it out there while we were having the conversation. But anyway.
Yeah, thank you. Now it's a great topic to discuss. And like I said, I know that go noodle is so important for the kids, even if it's just a quick little get up by your chairs and just do a little thing for a minute. I think it helps focus and someone just said like, get the wiggles out. I think the teacher said that too. And I think it is a very important conversation. So thank you very much, Jacob, for bringing this up. And we will move on. Um, okay, so we're on to the committee liaison reports. Jacob, I don't know if you want, do we, do you have a curriculum on? Or is this pretty much?
Curriculum was canceled for December. I do have a brief mental health task force one.
Sure.
And we did meet the first of the month to discuss the survey briefly. The survey is, is now closed and we're going to be discussing the results of that survey up in January. So it should be very interesting. And as they come in, I'll, I'll report back on the findings relative to the district.
Okay, thank you. Um, you know, policy you had given one last time. What about FFC? Do we have anything there? No?
No, we haven't met again. And unfortunately I had to cancel our December meeting because I had a conflict. So we'll pick it up in January and we've added an extra meeting already during budget, budget season.
All right. At this time, if I'm forgetting anyone, please just raise your hand and let me know because I don't even know what day it is. Okay, seen on, so I'm assuming that I don't, I'm not missing anyone. I find no report from me. Let's move on to the board action. If we could do the L one, the policy 6030, please.
Sure. So, um, as you may recall from last meeting, we did have policy 6030 presented for a first read for parent teacher communication. Policy committee had been working on that. The ads are in yellow and, or italics, if you don't, can't see the colors and the strikeouts are in blue or strikeout font. Essentially this is updating this policy so that it would take into account the legal, the legal requirements with respect to remote learning and what we would have to do if we were put back in a remote learning status. This information is now law and so we, we had to update this accordingly. So most of the yellow you see here is bringing it up to speed with what we were required to do.
All right. Um, given that this is the second read and I think we had a good conversation last meeting. I mean, if anyone has any questions, we can certainly discuss it during the just discussion portion of the motion, but I will certainly entertain the motion if anyone would like to make it.
Jacob Mari, I move to approve the changes presented in the December 14th, 2022 BOE meeting. Update policy 6030, parent teacher communication accordingly.
Jayden, register it. I'll second that.
Okay, um, any further discussion? If anyone would like to speak at this point, please raise your hand. If not, I will start going with the roll call vote, starting with Jaden. Okay, Jaden, it doesn't look like anyone has any hands. So roll call vote. So.
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
I'm a I as well. Therefore this passes unanimously. Okay. Um, L two, please.
Okay, so L two, similar situation. Um, this is brought to the attention of the board in the last meeting. This is up for action as that second read. Policy 5600 equitable identification of gifted and talented. Also talked about in the policy committee, obviously. Policy number changed slightly, but the rest of it's the same. And that is not a change from last meeting to this one, but in policy it was something like 52 or whatever. That was already taken. So 5600 is the new number presented in the last meeting and this one. So essentially that's why you'll see it's a 5020 change to 5600 on 11/28. The, it is entirely a new policy and it is to get us up to speed with much if and Goodwin recommends for, you know, for the equitable identification of gifted and talented. So it's putting really what we codifying it in a policy. And so there you won't see any strikeouts because the entire thing isn't add. So that's essentially just the recap from last time. And we did have a good, great discussion in policy about, you know, various perspectives and philosophies about, you know, gifted and, and the Rinzelé approach and things like that.
Okay, um, once again, I will entertain that motion if anyone would like to make it.
Jacob Mari, I move to approve the creation of policy 5600 equitable identification of gifted and talented students as presented in the December 14th, 2022 BOE meeting.
Dana Philbin, second. Okay, um, if you have any questions, please raise your hand. Tony?
Yeah, Dr. Will, just a quick question. I must have missed this statement when we reviewed it the previous times, but there's a line in there that says the district may identify up to 10% of the total student population for the district as gifted and talented. Uh, is that number state mandated or where did 10% come from?
That's, any reference to anything is from the shipment policy because it's pretty much a verbatim pickup.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, if there are no further questions, um, we will go ahead with the roll call vote. We'll start off with Jaden.
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Um, I as well. This passes unanimously. Um, I as well, this passes unanimously. Okay, um, let's move on to the, uh, calendar.
Sorry for the screen jumping all over here.
Okay, just had to move my papers around. Um, so I, I kind of called it the draft B. For the start date of the thirty first of August. So I think that, um, I will entertain a motion for that draft. Um. So that, I, I mean, I feel like we should probably put that somehow in the proposed motion considering that there were two drafts in here. Um, as proposed.
Yes. Or me. You can say with the draft with.
Starting.
Starting on the thirty first.
Yeah, I would, I would like that to be in part of the motion for when it's proposed.
Yeah.
Jacob Mari, I move to accept the Talon Public School twenty twenty three, twenty two, twenty four calendar as proposed. In the December fourteenth, twenty twenty two Board of Education meeting with an August thirty first start date.
Jayden, register. Jim, register it. I'll second.
Thank you. Um, at this time, do any board members have any discussion about this motion before we do a roll call vote? Okay, seeing no hands, um, let's start off with the roll call vote with Jaden.
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Lord?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
Um, I as well, um, therefore this passes and we have a start date of August thirty first. Okay. Um, at this time, let's move to the public participation. Um, please, now that you have a two minute time limit, if you can, please raise your hand. I will call on you and please list your name and address and the comments do have to be limited to the items on the agenda. So at this time, if any member of the public would like to speak, and my little list just went away, um, please raise your hand. Okay, um, seeing none, I will move on to the points of information for any board members. If you have anything that you would like to say at this time. Please do so now by raising your hand. Griffin?
Um, I, Dr. Will, I, since we don't have a finance meeting this month, I just thought I'd ask here, um, is the. June thirtieth audit, auditor's report finalized and, and distributed?
I don't think it is. So I, I have to check honestly. I don't, I haven't had, but I know that they were in process of doing that, but I don't know exactly. Where, where it landed right now.
Okay.
So I'll find out and let you know, but I, I just stopped top of my head. I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members at this time? Okay, um, this one, so seeing none, um, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Move to, uh, Jacob Mari, move to approve, uh, to adjourn the December fourteenth Board of Education meeting at seven fifty seven P M.
Oh, yeah, second.
Perfect. Um, if there's any discussion, I will go ahead and we'll just do a roll call vote since we're remote. So start off with Jaden. You are in the box next to me.
No problem. Hi.
Jacob?
Hi.
Sophia?
Hi.
Griffin?
Hi.
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Dana?
Hi.
And I, I as well, um, have a great night, everybody.